I'd like to call the ET and the Ramsey County Commission Order. Will you join me in the pledge?
A pledge of allegiance to the fight of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first item on the agenda would be approval of the February 6th minutes.
I move to approve second.
Motion and second to approve the minutes from the February 6th meeting as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Uh, approval of the agenda, anything to add to the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda. Second.
Motion and second to approve the agenda as printed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Uh, next item, Ramsey County Fair Board update on the building. Paul, is that you?
That's me. What do you do up there?
Please.
There, okay. We've been making progress.
Just state the name for the...
All that, Ramsey County Fair Board. We've been making progress in our building project. We did get the bid, or the building rebid. It came in about $250,000 over what it was here ago, which I guess everybody kind of understands that'd be about a 10% increase. So we're a little over $3 million. The fundraising has been going. We've, uh... Got approximately $1.6 million right now in pledges and in cash. We do have, uh, another $200,000 that we've been told is coming, but we haven't seen it yet. So that would put us at about $1.8. So we'd be about $1.2 short right now. We're still working on different grants, working with businesses to collect some money from that. I had visited with some banks just to see, we realized we're going to be short. And I asked them on a million dollar loan if we had enough income coming in. And just in some preliminary looking at it, they, they thought we could do a million dollar loan with the one mill we get from the county. And we've also got the possibility of some financing, some 2% money, which another bank would have to cooperate with, but we haven't gotten to the point yet where we're making that decision. Hopefully, we'll make a decision on the building within a month. Our prices are good for 30 days on the bid. I thought it was going to go up 3%, or the steel was going to go up 3% in 30 days and we didn't. And all that's $30,000, so we need to make that decision, so... I guess I appreciate the million dollars that the county has given us. We, some of the other large ones, the city has given us $125,000 over five years. We've had, uh, Harrison Versen's given us $75,000. Demon Fish has given us $15,000. Several other businesses have been in that $10,000 to $30,000 range. And we're taking money from individuals also, so hopefully, we will start construction this summer and be completed by June of 2025.
Just depending for the fair.
For the fair, that's the plan. Any questions?
So this $1.8 million, that includes our concrete?
That includes yours, yes. Do you know when that million dollars would be available?
After the 1st of March.
I think that'll work for us too, so... It sounded like when you ordered the building, you needed a little money down, but you didn't need all of it. We've got enough cash that, that would work for us.
So at what point in the project do you look at getting much more cash to go forward? When they start the process, or...
I don't understand.
Well, at some point, you're going to need to have more than a down payment on the, on the steel.
Yeah. A lot of the grants that we've got, they haven't funded the grants yet. When we start construction, we can send them invoices, then we'll get those grants, so we'll have several of those. Although some of them are over in the course of a few years, so those we wouldn't have available right away. Like I said, we're still, we've still got some grants we're ready, yet waiting on. Hopefully, we'll get some on, on those. We've been kind of disappointed in a couple of the grants, so that didn't go the way we thought they should have gone.
And it's... Actually, we ordered the building, we put the down payment, there was, was it 60 days or 80 days for delivery?
He was talking delivery in August, September, I think.
So the balance of the building is due when it's delivered.
Yeah.
And so, so just kind of wrapping my head around things. So we ordered the building, uh, or the steel. Construction starts or start clearing the land when?
Probably start clearing the land early summer. When the building gets there, I think it'll be August, September, start construction there. You thought you would have it basically up by the end of October?
Footings would be up by, and buildings start being erected at the end of October.
Building should be completely erected, is the way he was...
Enclosed before winter.
Enclosed before winter gets here.
Thanks.
That's just adding the building on footings, it's not completed inside.
As far as cementing, right now, our plan for concrete is, is 30 feet of concrete on the south and west. And we did visit with the contractor and between $200,000 and $250,000 to do it all. And depending upon how our fundraising came, if we decided we needed to do it all. Some of the people we've gotten funds from have said they would give us more if it was completed, completely cemented, so... But we always thought that's something we can always do later, if we can't do it right away.
I'm just asking, because if you're borrowing your money, I, in my opinion, I would prefer to keep borrowing it all. It's only going to get more expensive. I mean, I'm just looking...
Uh, regardless, it was $30,000 you don't have. We have some. We can only buy...
I know, I, I know.
Well, I think regardless, I think it's a great addition to our community. And certainly, and that's the way I felt two years ago when we voted on the motion to approve the million dollars. And, um, certainly liked to see the commission stand behind that and move forward with it and allow you guys to get going on it as soon as possible.
Well, thank you.
How we come up with the funds, you know, based on, listening back to the, the, uh, meeting from April 5th of 2022, it was, uh, yet to be determined on how we'd fund it. You know, initially, it was all ARPA, uh, then it was some other, um, ideas of how we would go ahead and, and do that. And we left it open to, um, discussion as, as they move forward, I guess. But, um, you know, my idea was always, um, utilizing the ARPA money that we received from the federal government. Now that way, it's not taken out of any tax base from Ramsey County citizens. And at that particular time, we have projects from other entities or departments that requested that money, or we had very limited, um, opportunities to spend it. You know, the federal government initially had some restrictions placed upon that. Um, they since had loosened some of those up, but, um, you know, initially, I always thought that that was a good way to, uh, give back to our community. And a good way to spend some of the money we received from the federal government, so...
So you'd be looking for that down payment coming up?
I would guess so, if it's available in March, that's probably when we would look for it. And I guess if, if you didn't want to give us it all right away, you know, we'd work with you on that too, so...
I think you'd have better utilization of it and be able to complete the project maybe a little sooner, I don't know, so...
I, I would hope that we would get it. Any other questions?
Commissioners, have any thoughts about how they want to fund that? Is that something we want to discuss tonight? We want to meet with Candy and see how, see if she's got any recommendations on how we do it?
Well, right now, um, Treasury's got it invested, that will come with March 1st is when that comes up, so... I mean, that would be...
Yeah.
That'd be the year of, for, I mean, so...
And then our next meeting is...
Yeah. Where's the best, or if they don't? So...
Hopefully, the other, couple of the grants that go through, so...
Hopefully, we do, but, you know, like I said, we're still, still writing some grants and some of them we're waiting on yet. They haven't made decisions yet, so...
Who knows, maybe there'd be some more available.
There might be, we're always, always looking. Ohio has been very busy with all that.
I think we've done, you know, an outstanding job, we're securing grants. You know, if you take a look at the $800, or $1.8 million that you have in pledges and cash on hand, and, you know, you subtract the million dollars that we've committed to, that's $800,000 of fundraising that you've done, so applaud you guys on that. That's $800,000 that you did have the first time you came around. So we, we appreciate you guys' efforts and, uh, I, I think, you know, as, as a community sees progress, they'll, they'll start coming out and, and supporting it as well with, not only their brutal support, but their financial support as well.
I was kind of over hoping once the building starts, that we'll have a little, little boost at that point too.
Yep. So I'm looking forward to it for the next couple generations in our community, so a great addition.
Okay, well, thank you.
And, you know, maybe we can, we'll work out some, uh, periodic updates or what Candy's going to need for the paperwork moving forward on those kind of things and, you know, progress reports or whatever the federal government requires for that type of, uh, funds, if we're committing it from the ARPA funds, so... But she'll, she'll put together some details that we'll need to keep track of.
Okay.
Appreciate you guys, thank you.
Thank you.
Highway Department, Jason's here in place of Kevin tonight, so welcome, Jason. Thank you for coming in.
Yeah, no problem. Uh, Jason Brown, Ramsey County Highway Department. Uh, I guess the main thing on our agenda tonight that we needed to have you guys look at was, load limits are starting to be posted in the western and southern parts of the state. We generate quotas into effect at the same time as the state highways want to affect. So we are entertaining a motion to put our load limits into effect at the same time as the state highways want to affect in our area.
I would so move to put the load limits at the same time.
We have motion and second, whoops. Motion and a second to go ahead and have the load limits on at the same time the state does. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Do we know what's going to happen?
Uh, no, it really depends on weather conditions, but with the warm weather they've been having, there's some stuff going on, salt and frost already. So I would say it could be, we could be seeing it in March this year, which is kind of unheard of after the last few years, but, I would say it's going to be sooner than later, but then again, we get big colds now, that's going to push it back. But it all can, it all seems right now, it's going to be the next few, two to three weeks, probably.
Could come on before our next meeting, could be after.
Right.
Yeah. But it never has been very consistent, other than it falls, uh, from the southwest on up.
Right.
As temperatures warm, so...
And along with that, we also, I've always sent a letter to the state highway patrol asking for their assistance with enforcing the load limits. So we'll need a motion also from the chairman to sign the letter asking for their assistance. So we'll...
We have motion and a second to go ahead and have the chairman sign the, uh, request letter to North Dakota Highway Patrol, uh, requesting them to, for assistance in enforcing the load limits. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
And then, just a couple of quick, I was thinking items we have here, I was keeping items. The, um, online vehicle surplus sale is on for the highway department. Um, it is on COVID now. I'm, I'm sure some of you have been following it. Um, Tom Keller, local, Diagnose, was running it for us, doing an excellent job. Um, he's keeping everything updated, he's got the manuals and stuff, the list of equipment we had listed. Um, yeah, video open on that stuff. Prices are moving along nicely, so that's a, that's a good sign.
Was there a closing date on that by Karen?
Yeah, I do, I have it here. It is the, uh, March 7th, okay, 7:00 PM Central, March 24th, so, March 7th. And then lastly, I was just going to touch base, so, Commissioner Bolt had mentioned earlier, they're asked earlier at one of the meetings to Kevin about bathrooms. Our bathrooms are pretty much completed, as I stand here today. We've had a little bit of time to get those wrapped up. So all the satellite shops have water heaters, sinks, toilets. They're insulated, wired, and we're painting them, right? Painting machine, so, just an update for you. I know you were curious, so... You guys have anything for me?
I have a question, load limits. Um, are they going to come out at the same time as the state highway, or is that different?
Um, usually, yeah, we go, we try to stay within the district, so everybody's posted at the same time, so we don't confuse everybody. Because really, you can't get on our road off of the state road, you really can't get to the state road without using one of our roads. So that's why we sent, we're just going to the D District on, we'll open the district on now. Anybody else, anything?
Anything, Jason? Any questions for them? If not, thank you so much for coming in.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Sheriff Lang?
Good evening, Brian Lang, Ramsey County Sheriff. The reason I'm here tonight is, uh, the state attorney's office draw up a agreement with our K-9 handler for purchase of the dog if he should decide he wanted to relocate, or if the dog should, uh, be injured or be disabled in line of duty and is unable to perform its duties. We kind of taken the price of the dog, what it would cost us per year. We broke it down, uh, to six-year contract. Each year, the amount goes down, uh, so it was like year six, it's $54,000. Uh, year five is $45,000, year four is $36,000. Year three is $27,000. Year two, it dropped it to $18,000, and the last year, we take it down to $9,000. After he reaches, uh, the six years, and they decide to retire or move on, then you would have the ability to purchase the K-9 for $10. I've had, uh, the K-9 handler review it. He's in agreement with, uh, what's in the contract. I believe a copy is open in December, continue. Uh, we're just looking for your input. Uh, he's ready to sign, I'm ready to sign off on it. We just need, uh, the commission to approve it and sign off on it as well.
So basically, this is just stating if he was to leave us, this is what we would give for the animal.
That's correct. Scan for insurance for it.
Yep. When I first looked at it, I thought it was costing us that.
No, no. I wouldn't be talking to you.
I think it's pretty fair. Fair contract, you know, covers the county's, um, costs. We've invested in the K-9 unit, covers the sheriff's departments, uh, and certainly covers the, uh, Deputy Hammond's, um, obligations, so...
And he's here with us tonight, if you have questions for him, or if you want his thoughts on it.
How's it working on it?
So far, so good.
Good.
He's, he's itching to get out, so...
Well, next time you're around, bring him in, we'd like to meet him.
Absolutely.
Do we need a motion for this, or?
Yes, we'll need a motion for this, and then we will, as commission, you'll have to sign off on it. All the commissioners and all of us.
I'll make a note from that we go with the agreement that's thrown up. Second.
We have motion and a second that we go ahead and agree upon the terms of the K-9 agreement. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
That's all I have for you tonight, unless you have something to me?
The vehicle still in the process of getting converted to...
I just have one, uh, old sailor get back to me today that will submit a, a quote. The others have been kind of dragging their feet. I don't know if they want, want to put the cage in or what, but the company we usually deal with to put in our radios and cages have not gotten back to me. We'll reach out to them again, if, if the company and, and mine out, uh, they were excited to throw a bid in, so we'll see. But I'm hoping within the next few weeks, we can find a cage and, you know, put in.
So has he not been on duty to do that, or because you don't have the cage in the vehicle yet?
Correct, yeah. We had, we have had him out and used him on a couple of things, but he hasn't been on a patrol yet.
Okay. I bet he's itching to get to work. Yeah. So... All good. Anything else for Sheriff Lang? Sheriff, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Uh, moving on to unfinished business, uh, discussion on the floodplain administration.
Jeff?
Yeah?
Before you move on, maybe it'd be a good idea to just quick sign that, so these guys don't have to hang around until the end.
Sure. Do we have a notary in the...
Are you a notary, Candy?
So...
May not have a notary, so...
Well, we'll have to get Leah a notary stamp, is that the next?
Yeah. So, but we'll get, we'll get that taken care of as, as soon as possible and, and, uh...
Casey, Casey goes at night, started in the morning, so...
All right. Thank you, Casey.
Thank you.
Now, uh, township, uh, floodplain administration discussion. Uh, we had that meeting, was it last week ago?
Monday.
Monday, the 12th. Monday following in Super Bowl, if I remember correctly. Had a great turnout, um, it was jam-packed, we ran out of tables and chairs. Uh, glad everybody participated and came in and got the information. Uh, both, uh, State's Attorney Cummings and his assistants, Mr. Daniel Hall was there. Um, I don't know if, uh, you have any input? And Commissioners Little, Henry, and Gesner were both there as well. Thought it was a very informational meeting, thought it went well. And I don't know if there's a whole lot to follow up on. I do know the interim committee, uh, met, I think that, was it that Thursday, Wednesday, Thursday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday. Yeah, the, the following day, they met down at Vesmar discussing, uh, the interim legislature, uh, Ag and Natural Resources Committee is studying that, um, land use authorization with townships and floodplain administration. And there was, um, Insurance Commissioner, uh, John Godfrey, and, uh, Aaron Krantz from the Department of Water Resources. Both, uh, got up and spoke, legislators had some questions for him. Um, runs about, I don't know, 20, 40 minutes. Um, certainly worth your time to watch it if you're at all interested. You can find it on the legislator's website. And, um, a plethora of information coming our way. And one of the good things is, is that, and they kind of applauded our efforts on the things that we have in place and our, um, efforts that we've made communicating with townships on the importance of, of this, and, uh, townships within Ramsey County are signing off on the resolutions one way or another, um, but it's getting done. So appreciate Chris's efforts on that and, uh, Mr. Cummings and Mr. Hall's and, uh, Megan's efforts upstairs. I think she was a part of drafting those resolutions as well, Bo.
Yes, the, the whole team chipped in.
So good team effort, and, uh, they look good, and, uh, the state was very impressed with them, so they'll probably get past Rome. Anything else you'd like to add, Chris?
You want to go to the road?
Daniel?
Yes, I do, actually.
Perfect.
At the meeting last Monday, there was talks of placing deadlines on the townships getting back to us with their resolutions one way or the other. And it was recommended by Commissioner Gesner that, uh, March 24th be that date that they get back to us by. And I, I wanted to bring that up to the rest of the commissioners, just to see if that's something that the commission wanted to reiterate to the townships, just to encourage them to be responsive. And if not, just whenever they get around to it, is probably how it will go. I think a lot of people probably have that March 24th date in mind, but I don't know that there was any clear understanding that they had to get that done or anything like that. There was a lot of questions as well about what the plan actually is, or what the ordinances will be if we ever get around, if they were to agree to it, they wanted more information. Which is understandable, and the state's attorney's office is working to get those ordinances drafted. And we had some thoughts on how that might be best done. If we had a default version or a draft ready by that March 24th date, uh, that might be encouraging to townships to participate and get those in, so that they can have more of a say in the drafting process and what those ordinances actually... so that they can have more of a say in the drafting process and what those ordinances actually look like once they start to get implemented. And those that aren't in while we're in that drafting process kind of get whatever everybody else comes up with together. But I did want to bring that to the commission's attention and see if the new commissioners had any questions or comments or concerns about that.
I think we have to have deadlines, this is just going to keep going. Because I feel like it's been very, you know, for a long time already.
Well, on that 24th deadline, you know, there's some of the townships that have their zoning, that have had their zoning and they, you know, they've got a three-meeting process that they have to go through. So, I mean, some of those with good intentions might be the 24th, but they might, you know, time restrictions, might not be able to do the 24th, but, I mean. Maybe as hard as possible, you know, just so we can have a place to stay.
I'm not saying necessarily it'd be 24th, but I think we do have to have some kind of date. Otherwise, it's, we're going to keep, I feel it's just going to keep getting pushed out and pushed out. I mean, where do we, how far do we want to push it out, you know?
Well, I mean, the township, the indications I've had is, you know, if they don't have that process, they'll drag it out, but I think the ones that are serious about it will have it done by then if they can. I guess I like the idea of those who have it in by the 24th. We'll have a priority in being listened to as far as drafting the ordinance because I think since we're trying to keep this as transparent as possible that that would be good for them to be involved in that process. I mean, obviously, we have 100 people going, we're going to have 100 different opinions and that's not going to work real well, but, I mean, I think that's important to keep, keep the participation, you know, it's increasing and I think that's important. So, I, I don't think the 24th can be a hard date, you're in or you're out by then, but it'd give us a, it'd give us a stepping off point, so, you know. Well, a much better idea by the 24th. So, right, who's in and who's supposed to be in and who's absolutely not in by then. The ones that aren't going to do this, I mean, the deadline could be debated, they just need to publicize it. So, if they're not going to do it, I think, if they're not doing it, it should be the 24th. Does that make sense?
I agree.
And a progress report from the other ones, you know, that are in the process of running their three meetings or whatever, you don't give us a progress report so we know where they're at.
At least we have some standard.
Right, you know, letting them know where we're at. Right now, I agree with you, if you don't have some kind of date to kind of have things gathered up, then it's going to be too long, so.
So my question would be to legal counsel in house. If a township does not sign off on one way or another, by default, does that fall back on the county? The community participation? You know, because if somebody's out there, they have a policy in place and there's a community indicator and that's maybe falsely indicated on their policy, could maybe somehow not cover us, correct?
Oh, Cummings, Ramsey County State's Attorney. The worst possible thing a township could do in this situation is to do nothing. The only way that an individual is covered under the county's umbrella is if the township takes some sort of affirmative action here. So, we have the three different options. Option three, which would be county management. Currently, a lot of these policies are under the county's umbrella, but unless that township says, "County, we want you to do this", those policies don't have any teeth and FEMA may decide that they're not valid.
And they won't indicate where they're at, is my understanding, is that they won't tell us that, okay, there's one X, Y, Z township that could potentially have their own community identification on it. You know, that's something that they're not giving us.
That's correct, and there's really no way to force them to do that. So, there's this, maybe this misunderstanding going around that if we do nothing, we'll be covered by the county's umbrella. That's wrong, that's just factually incorrect. You got to do something if you want to be county, covered under the county's umbrella.
Okay. Well, we need to make that clear.
And I think Tyler Smolmer did a very good job making that clear in his presentation and telling you again right now and anybody who's listening, your township has to do something. Doing nothing is the worst possible option that you can participate in. And that's straight from the Department of Water Resources.
Perfect.
So.
Appreciate that.
Not a problem. Other questions?
So going forward and setting that deadline, March 24th, is that kind of what your thoughts?
Well, I think it gives plenty of time to make that decision. I mean, I forgot what the state said, you know, gave permission to have their annual meetings throughout for multiple March or whatever, if they did, if they gave whatever it was.
I think it's scheduled for the 26th of March here in Ramsey County.
Okay.
Their township officer meeting, so usually get really good participation at that meeting.
So, I, you know, whether it's 24th or the 26th, it doesn't.
But there again, if they haven't done it and they want to publicize it correctly.
Right.
As a township.
Right.
And. So.
So, I guess maybe if we had. Is it Sunday?
Yep.
So maybe by March 15th. That's not really all that far away, I don't know, maybe we need a deadline before that so they have to communicate to us what their intentions are.
A letter of intent or something?
Kind of, I mean, I don't know, a verbal one, or, I mean, obviously verbal has gotten us into part of this situation already.
Right. All we're looking for is for the resolutions to be submitted and that's the letter of intent that we need at the moment is just what is your plan to let us do it or for you to do it yourselves? I did want to add on to Mr. Cummings' explanation that these ordinances are being drafted regardless and they're going to be county ordinances. Just because they do not choose to have the county enforce those ordinances and make sure that improvements made by landowners are in compliance with those ordinances doesn't mean they're not subject to those ordinances. It's just the management is dictated by FEMA and the NFIP regulations and requirements and to get access to those things, you have to have somebody managing. But these ordinances are happening and are going to be enforceable in all of these townships regardless. It's just having that agent designated for NFIP purposes.
Great point, appreciate that.
I guess I'm happy you stick with the 24th, the 25th would be a Monday, the way it looks.
And we have gotten good, when people were showing up at these meetings, they filled out the sign-in sheets with contact information. Okay. So, better ways of getting ahold of everybody now.
Hopefully.
Hopefully. Perfect. So Commissioner Gesner, would you like to go ahead and?
I'll make the motion, if that might be March 25th.
Thank you.
As well as if, if you have to email us, if you've got that, maybe you could send out a reminder or would you be the point of contact getting that information out? By the end of the week?
Need about two more, but yes, I can, I'll make it happen.
Or by the 1st of March, if you can get that out and give them a couple of weeks to digest it and. But, you know, hopefully, some of them are watching this. We have our media present, so thank you for being here tonight. And I'll be on coffee time on Thursday morning and I can mention that hard deadline that we'd like to stick to at that particular time. So, we have motion for March 25th.
I'll second that motion.
We have a second. That the resolutions from the townships come back to the county. And if they can't come back by that time, we'd like to know what their plan is for completion, I guess. Sound like a deal?
That works, sure.
Perfect. Further discussion?
Question, how many townships did not attend?
Well, I think there was at least one maybe I know of up north that, that I knew of anyway, that contacted me.
Maybe two, three?
There wasn't a lot, they had really good participation there.
Correct.
So, you know, it was, it was the full host.
And the one that didn't show up already had a resolution in the following day, if I remember right.
Yep.
So, that was, that was good.
No.
Other one I was missing.
Yeah. Because they did make notice that they wouldn't be at the meeting, but then they would drop the paperwork off the next day, so.
Yep. So, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side, motion carries. Uh, I'm going to have to already switch screens, so. New business, our Central Housing Authority board appointment, Cale Strummy, five-year term. Cale's not here to defend himself, so.
Motion to approve.
That was a phone call from Tim Green.
Okay.
Second.
I'd assume that Cale would agree to that. We have motion and a second to go ahead and appoint Cale Strummy to the Ramsey County or North Central Housing Authority for a five-year term. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side, motion carries. Abatement list?
Who'd approve the abatement list? Second.
Motion and a second to go ahead and approve the abatement list as presented. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side, motion carries. Voucher for lead local workshop. And that's just a money in, money out kind of thing. It was a workshop, got NDSU extension put on out at the college, looked like they had a room full up there, I'm not sure if anybody had the opportunity to attend. But they're putting these workshops on all across the state and this is a NDSU-funded item, correct? NDSU, yeah.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to go ahead and approve the voucher for lead local workshop. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side, motion carries. Visitors and delegations? Anybody have anything? Bo, did we have changes to the JPA for the LEC?
I can stick to that. So, at our last meeting, we approved the changes, or I had recommended that the changes be approved that the city had made. At that time, Howard Swanson, the representation for the Law Enforcement Center Board, had sent over in a letter some concerns that he had about some of the provisions and changes. So, we're going back to make sure we can harmonize something between the three, the city, the county, and the LEC board just to make sure that everything is completely 100% on the same page. Once we get that confirmation, one way or the other, we will just bring that back to the commission to have any further changes approved one last time. That being said, it is a joint powers agreement, so that the other counties to the agreement have to approve them as well. We can't make them move any faster than they are willing to do those things. But at least with the city and the county being on the same page, it will be a lot more pressure to get them to move a little bit faster. But we are working towards getting on the same page as the LEC board's representation.
So, do we need to make any, was there any changes from the last time we met as a commission? Or any significant changes that we need to take notice of and hold upon?
Not this time, most of the changes have been discussed briefly, but we are working toward getting a harmonized, agreed-upon version done between the three entities. And when that is finished, which will be before the next meeting, we will likely be bringing those to the commission to then basically take those to the LEC board to encourage the members to approve.
Okay. So will we have something, do you think, by the 5th of March?
Yes.
It would really benefit the other counties if they could have the same JPA at a particular time, because they all meet at the same time we do, the first Tuesday of the month.
It certainly would, and when we have that finalized version, we will, that will obviously be distributed to the LEC board as they have agreed that that is what they would like it to be at the time, and they will be able to take that to their individual commissions.
Okay. All right, another month down the road. And it's not on you, you're new. But this has been a long road to hold here and one of those things that is taking time. Wheels of government do not spin very quickly. So, it is what it is and we'll get it done and get it all agreed upon and hopefully, the other state's attorneys and the other counties have no objections to what changes we made from the original JPA. So, appreciate your guys' work on it. Because I think it's finally really close to being done. Really close. I said that last time, too, I think, but, Cale. So, Commissioner Volk and I, I think we'll both be at the LEC meeting tomorrow morning, so. We can bring it up and discuss it then. Anybody else have any announcements, discussions?
No.
Just a reminder of our second meeting in March, again, canceled. Commissioners, I know Commissioner Gesner and myself both plan on going to the commissioner conference in Bismarck. So, department heads, public, just be aware that no second meeting in March. So. And Candy has the registration information for the conference, if anybody's looking. ndaco.org. ndaco.org. Anything else, Commissioner or State's Attorney?
I think I previously, sorry, Paul Cummings, State's Attorney. I think I had previously requested permission to travel out of state for a conference, um, training. I was selected to go to a, um, specialized training for reviewing digital evidence in Alabama. There are 100 prosecutors and law enforcement agents nationwide that got selected for that. I would just appreciate the blessing, cause my flight leaves on Sunday night, so...
Didn't, didn't we give that to you?
I think you did, but I just, in case I did, and I wanted to bring it up.
I, I do believe we did.
Yeah.
And, uh, have a wonderful trip, lots, have fun.
Thanks, my team's available if you need them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate all you guys do. Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, Paul, we are soon fishing as no boundaries of the lake chapter, and we guess we've got our annual pancake and sausage breakfast, AC Hall from eight to this coming Sunday, so... Come hungry, bring eight bucks, come on in, eat lots.
Thank you so much, Paul, appreciate you being here and reminding us all that. Fishing as no boundaries, pancake and sausage feed, Sunday, February 25th, I believe it is. 25th? Eight, uh, one, eight to two cases.
Yeah, some of the radio ads aren't quite right.
Perfect.
Lunch or, lunch or breakfast or lunch?
Breakfast, lunch, brunch.
Be bad.
And come hungry, bring eight bucks. Thank you. Any other announcements? If not, eating a drink.